Morning, everyone. We'll call the Montgomery County Planning Commission Board Meeting for December fourteenth to order. Right now, we do not have a forum, just myself and Dulce are present. Dulce, do you have any comments?
I do not.
I do not. We'll have to hold off on approval in minutes.
Thanking everyone for November's meeting. You did a great job. Wish it wasn't so cold, but the.
It was cold.
Was it cold there?
It was cold today.
Oh, good. It just wasn't me.
It wasn't you.
Okay, and I thought the awardees were excellent. I thought we did a good job a little too long. I think we need to be better, more more, you know, tight editors on the presentations, but I think people enjoyed it and it was great recognizing all that good work in Montgomery County. So thank you for your work, everyone.
Any public comment or staff comments? Okay, we're gonna skip number three since it's an action item and we need a forum, so we'll hold off on that. So we'll move on to number four, which is the Infrastructure Investment in Jobs Act, Montgomery County, a call in, Matt squared.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Dulce. Thank you. Let's talk slowly. Good morning, guys. Thank you for your time today. So the IIJA, the or the bipartisan infrastructure law was passed about a year ago. And so during the course of two thousand and twenty-two, Matt, myself, our team, Scott, others, we've been grappling with what this bill is, what it means. And so after about a year of things trickling out of Washington and out of the Biden administration, we feel we're at a point where we would like to give you an update and overview of what this law is, what's in it. We're gonna stick to a high level overview. There's a lot in it. There's a lot in this law. It would, our twenty-five minutes here will not do it justice. So we're just gonna give an overview. We're gonna go over three quick things. There we go. Awesome. I love my remote. I cannot do a presentation without this remote. My lifeline. All right, so we're gonna go through three things. I'm gonna do numbers one and three. Matt will do number two. We're gonna give you a context and an overview of what the IIJA is. We're gonna talk a little bit about the most relevant competitive programs that are in the IIJA. We'll explain why we're only gonna go through about five or six and not three hundred. We'll get to that. And then lastly, what our county and our region are doing in light of this bill and the lay of this law to secure money and advance our communities. So context and overview. The Infrastructure Investment in Jobs Act. It's one of the rare times that Congress does not pass a big bill or a big law that has a really cute acronym like the FAST Act or safety or safety lieu or any of those. But they did come up with another name, the bipartisan infrastructure law, that's down here, AKA the B I L. So you can just call it the bill, which really is quite confusing because these were built before they were laws. But we don't make the rules. We just watch Congress pass things and then we react. So one point two trillion dollars total. About half of that, however, is new money, and that's important. The IIJA, despite being abroad in terms of infrastructure, it really needs to be thought of as the transportation bill. That's what it is. It's just like the FAST Act and safety and safety lieu. It's the latest iteration of that. There's lots of other things in there, too. But five hundred fifty billion dollars is new and the rest of it is existing programs, most of it in transportation. It passed the House in June of last year, then went to the Senate, then went back to the House to reconcile. And then it was signed by President Biden November fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-one. So this is a really good graphic that CNN had put up.
Five hundred fifty dollars, five hundred fifty billion dollars of new money.
Yes.
Where's the old money from?
The old money is reauthorization of the existing programs, like, like.
They've already been appropriated.
Yeah, like the service, it's like the Service Transportation Program, Service Transportation Urban.
It was rebundled.
Yeah, so, so, so the FAST Act expired after five years, right? And that set spending limits for what they would use the gas, the federal gas tax for. So that other, whatever it is, six hundred fifty billion dollars was existing programs like Surface Transportation, National Highway the program, the CMAC, transit funding, all the stuff that everyone's been getting for years. That's part of that other not new stuff.
But it's still, it's still new money, just existing programs, right?
Yeah, it was reauthorized and was, it was.
Existing programs. It wouldn't have authorized unless they had this, this bill and they just.
Right, they would just on continuing resolutions and just funded it at the levels of the FAST Act.
On the cuff math is noted. One point two minus the five fifteen.
I was helping my, I was helping my eight-year-old do math on words. I'm sharp today. All right, so, so that's, that's how you think about it. It's, it's, it's all the funding codes that our, our transportation team deals with, the same funding levels. But five hundred fifty billion is new investment programs that weren't there before or existing programs that have been bumped up considerably, so which you'll see here what that means. All right, so this was a good graphic that we really liked from CNN. It kind of gives you an overview of what that new money is, the five hundred fifty billion. And you can see that roads and bridges gets the biggest share. It always does in America. But then there are significant investments in upgrading our electric grid, broadband, water quality. And then, you know, the, the new money for airports, public transit, passenger freight rail, intercity rail. This is important. We're gonna get back to this here in a moment. But you can see that's, they're spreading around among twelve or so different categories, twelve plus categories. Some of these are more money for transportation, other things are money for new infrastructure initiatives and investments that the feds want to make. So this is another way you need to look at this, this, the IIJA is. Part of it is discretionary and part of it is formula, right? So that's six hundred fifty billion, for the most part, is formula funding. That's what I put up here. FAST Act, six hundred fifty billion. It's the reauthorization of existing programs. That's the stuff that becomes what's in the tip. So formula money goes to the states. States apportion it to the regions and the MPOs. And then the regions and the MPOs program it on their tip, more or less. There's always exceptions, but that's the way to think about it. Discretionary, however, those are the competitive grants. That's the fun stuff. That's the, the, the gamesmanship. So that's the, for the most part, that's the five hundred fifty billion. And so USDOT decides, you know, who gets these grants, there are national competitions. Yeah, they release what they call NOFOs, Notice of Funding Opportunity. That tells you everything you need to know about that program. We're gonna get into that again in a little deeper detail. Their application periods, just like at the state level, you have the multimodal transportation fund, for instance, Greenlight Go, Arlie. The feds have just a bigger, better version of all of that, and it's the same kind of framework. And I underlined here on the right, focus on equity. That's really important. Congress really wants the money in the IIJA to be equity focused. To invest in disadvantaged communities. People and groups and neighborhoods that have seen disinvestment over the years. So a lot of the competitive grants, they wanna see, you know, are you applying for a place like Norris Town or Pottstown? They're not really interested in directing that money to like a wealthier township like we have several of here in Montgomery County. So you're gonna see that pop up in this presentation quite a bit. Yes.
Is that over those dozen or so different categories? With just rails and trails, we are the bridges and highways.
Yeah, effectively, yes. We're gonna get into actual programs. And all those programs, we're just gonna give you a tiny, tiny sample. But all those discretionary programs are overseen by USDOT. And, and those programs are what invests in airports or rail freight or broadband.
Change, water, all that kind of stuff goes through them.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're the ones who make those decisions on what to fund with the input, obviously, of our senators and the congressional reps. So just a, an even deeper dive here, go another level below. Formula funding, you know, on the highway side, our region gets another hundred eighty-five million dollars a year to the tip. We'll talk a little bit later about what that means from a practical standpoint. And those are the funding categories I was referring to, guys. NHPP, which is money that can only go on the national highway system. STP, the Surface Transportation Program, which is similar, but can go to other things. Bridge money, CMAC, all those things, it just increases all those pots to the tune of about hundred eighty-five million more a year for the next five years. And then Transit Septa gets another hundred million dollars a year, which they've added to their capital budget. We'll talk about what that means in terms of projects in just a moment. On the discretionary side, this is what I'm getting at, right? Where, there are literally hundreds of new programs that they have created. And that's why we cannot do justice with this presentation on what's available. Please don't ask us to list them all. It's a lot to wrap our head around. But, you know, there's big infrastructure highway things like RACE, infra, mega, RACE is something that's been around for a number of years. It was Tiger under the Obama administration, became Bill under the Trump administration, now they call it RACE under the Biden administration. But those are for building highways, building interchanges, really big, expensive stuff, billion-dollar projects. Bridge Investment Program, NAVI, which is electric vehicles. Some of these other ones, Safe Streets for All Out, these streets reconnecting communities. They're all about things that we as planners like, you know, minimizing traffic impacts and connecting communities over rail lines and, you know, environmental justice. The, a lot of those three and things like that have money. Protect Carter ID, that's intercity rail, we'll get to these. You know, lots of these things, and this is just, you know, eight of them, nine of them. There are literally hundreds of programs to look into and apply for. So the winners overall, like who really wins with, with, remember, we, we showed that picture with the twelve different categories, right? There's lots of things in there, but who are the big winners? We wanted to still this down and, and, and make this stick in your heads. Big winners, number one is intercity rail. Sixty-six billion dollars for Amtrak, for localities that want Amtrak, for building our intercity rail network. And that's really important, right? Sixty-six billion is the last eighteen years of appropriations combined. Amtrak is getting so much money, as some members on this board know, they've been on a big hiring spree. Because they are gearing up to be able to have the capacity to do things and spend this money, very important. And you can see just, you know, how you break it down, thirty billion alone for the Northeast Corridor. And then lots of other different smaller numbers for other types of improvements and new rail lines. This is gonna come into play in a moment. We talk about intercity passenger service to Reading. Another winner is walking and biking. Again, this shows the priorities. Congress, for the most part, is saying highways are good. We still want you to, to build highways and improve our roads. But we need to improve our game and equalize what we're spending on things. So walking and biking is a big winner in the IIJA. Pennsylvania is gonna get about two hundred million dollars of new transportation alternatives funding in the next four years. It's almost a fifty percent increase. Our state itself per year is gonna get between twenty-six and forty-eight million each of the next five years. Our region is gonna get, is gonna double from four million to eight million each year, which doesn't sound like a lot. But when you add it up over a number of years, it means a number of circuit trails that could potentially get built. And this is on top of CMAC money and the new carbon funds, which will be about sixty-five million dollars a year statewide. So you can start to see the feds are, are, are money, are giving significant money to this. It's trickling down to our region and increasing what we have available to spend on walking and biking. And then the other winner is bridges. This was really important because, you know, Congress has a way that they fund things. They really like to fund bridges that are on the system. But for the first time, they recognize that our transportation system doesn't just limit itself to who owns stuff to, you know, what PennDOT owns or PennDOT Network of Roads. Right, Montgomery County, we have a lot of roads owned by PennDOT, but we have seventy-five miles that are owned by the county government. And then we have hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of miles of roads owned by our municipalities. And both the county and our municipalities, they have bridges on those roads. And this was a way for Congress to say, you know what, we're gonna start prioritizing you to have a good shot at getting some of this money as well. Because what good is it if you can only get around on sixty-three, but you can't get off and get around on Barn Road, right? So the BRIP is, is, is part of that. It requires no match. Our region gets about forty-one million dollars additionally a year for this. And, you know, you can see there's existing categories of bridge money, the BOF, which was the off-system bridges money that we had. And we're getting even more. And then there's also a sixteen billion dollar discretionary grant program for bridges, which we'll get into, too. Dulce, you look like you have a question?
No, 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 I'm just saying, you know, we started, I guess it was ten years ago, investing locally in our bridges, recognizing that there was a great need. So hopefully, I mean, if it's not matching, I don't know how getting out of the blocks early has helped us. But I would think that at least we've gotten some energy around this issue.
Yeah, it'll take some time to get more energy out of it. But the reality is, is for once, a place like Marlboro can go after this money for a local bridge and not have to worry about pinching pennies together and coming up with a twenty percent match, right? Which, again, there's a focus on equity, and so a rural community or disadvantaged community might not have the local funds to do it and replace their bridge. And Congress finally did.
Still just as dangerous.
It is.
You know, I'm saying, no, no, I'm saying for local communities who don't have money, still, it might be dangerous for a few number of people, but at the point, we're at the point where they're dangerous. Thank you.
So is it, is it easy, in the slides that you're giving us, are they, is it easy to understand what of the money that's coming is part of the formulary and what's part of the discretionary?
Yeah, so discretionary, this sixteen billion dollar grant program, that's not something that our municipalities are gonna use. And we'll explain why in a couple of minutes.
But all the other stuff, forty-one million and nineteen million is part of the formulary, six hundred fifty billion?
Correct, yes.
We went up the slides before, when we went into the, for the walk, bike and.
Yeah, so.
Is that all discretionary?
The, the intercity rail is discretionary. It's competitive grants. It's all competitive grants. The other two, walking and biking. Yeah.
So go back a second.
Yeah.
So it's all competitive, however, it's already been allocated to those five.
Components.
Five categories.
Yeah, so Chrissy is, well, Chrissy is a competitive program that, you know, lots of different rail operators and lines across the country can go for. Same with grade crossings. This is pretty much open to anyone in the country. But the other three, obviously, Northeast Corridor is very limited geographic scope. And then out of these other two, you know, this might be to connect, I don't know, Pittsburgh and Cincinnati. I'm just gonna make up pairs.
Is that sixty billion dollars in control of Amtrak?
Uh, yes, as far as I understand, it's for things that Amtrak would probably make to improve their network outside the Northeast Corridor.
But not competitive, only competitive within Amtrak and their, and their, and their priorities.
For the most part, yeah. And, and Amtrak's, and it's not like Amtrak just gets the money and spends it. They're looking for local partners that will match and spread some of the, the cost around. Does that make sense?
Sort of. Okay. And then the walk, bike stuff that you talked about, so the forty-eight, the twenty-six to forty-eight billion dollars is part of the formulary?
Yeah, that comes to our, that comes into our region through the tip.
And then is the four to eight part of discretionary?
Yeah. No, no, the four to eight is what we get in our tip. Twenty-six to forty is what the state gets and then allocated. So this is a subset of this. The rest of the money goes to Lehigh Valley, Pittsburgh.
They're discretionary grant programs like SS4A, Safe Streets Rose for All. There are other.
They're not part, are they part of the, the formular, part of the budget or are they part of the discretionary?
They're discretionary.
So this, that's new money.
Yes, this is new money indoor tip. This is the formula funds.
Okay.
Your scorecard, right?
Yeah, well, I think this is, I, I, I would like to have a copy of the PowerPoint, but at the end of the PowerPoint, I can we have a description or a vocabulary, not a vocabulary, the definitions of some, some of the acronyms? So anyone who's looking at it will know what we're talking about at least. I don't know if you have one. You, you guys all know.
I have one from last week. So I was at the Penn State Transportation Engineering and Safety Conference, attended a session where the feds were actually there talking about these programs. And one of the screen captures I grabbed was all the acronyms, the RACE, the INFRA. So I can send that around very easily, even this morning here.
Think it'll be helpful.
For the PowerPoint to go.
Yes, I've had conversations in the last couple of weeks, in the last couple of days about the state grant programs from the federal government and the new administration. So I'm interested in passing some of this information along, this distilled the way we have it here.
One of the things that we will also send you when we're done is the White House's three hundred sixty-five page primer on what's in.
Yeah, that I believe I have.
Was that?
That I believe I have.
Okay, it lists, it lists every grant.
I've gone through six pages without falling asleep.
Yeah, I try to think it's four hundred some, right?
It's a lot.
Yeah.
It's a lot. This stuff is major.
That's, that's what I'm saying. So we're trying to distill it into something that we all in this room can understand. But it is scratching the surface of what's in this mess.
I don't think you're there yet.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so, so again, the big takeaway that we have for you guys, intercity rail gets a ton of money, walking, biking gets a ton of money. Bridges get a ton of money. They're the real winners here. What's new? All right, so what does this mean for a region? Some of the highlights, it means we got eleven new projects on the roadway side on the tip. Five large road projects got refunded. This was money that in the last tip update, the twenty-one tip, a couple of years ago, we had to take money out of these projects and put them onto the long-range plan, like they're on the long-range plan already. It just means we didn't fund them in the tip fully or at all. So we restored money from that effort. We got thirty-four new bridges on the tip. Like I said, bridges are real winners. And then Septa took their hundred million dollars a year, and they said, we're gonna invest in trolley mod, high, near sound, high-speed line upgrades, making the Broad Street subway ADA accessible. They have a huge list of stations. So that's where that money is coming for, from, when it comes into the tip or when it comes into Septa's capital budget, that's where it's going. We'll talk about what it means for Monaco in the next slide.
Now, when you say region, what does that mean?
Means the five counties.
D V R P C.
Off D V R P C.
Well, right.
Nine counties.
In Pennsylvania.
So five counties, Philadelphia and the force around me.
Correct, correct. I'd love to talk about New Jersey, but.
We can't steal money from them, so we don't talk about it.
Right.
Yeah.
Although D V R P C's together is bifurcated from a funding standpoint, so.
Yeah, New Jersey, New Jersey's doing the same thing on their side. Their money flows down to their four counties. So when I say the region, I always mean our five counties, the ones that matter. So and from a big standpoint, you know, like I said, more bridge money for county local bridges, and we've got these new funding streams are the acronyms, protect and carbon. Protect is for environmental resilience and carbon is for sustainability, again, air quality, that sort of thing. And installation of DC fast chargers. This is money that's gonna be coming into our region in some way, shape or form. We just don't have the details yet. Okay. What it means for Montgomery County, because let's be honest, that's what matters the most for us in this room. So those eleven new road projects. I don't know where we're up here. So that's these tip projects. Improvements at twenty-nine and one thirteen in Ron's, Hercules Township. The three and I connector, we created a new phase for that. That's gonna help alleviate the backups near the Lansdale Interchange. When the turnpike put in their slip ramp, now everyone queues up on the thing around Mainland Village. That's what HT four is, phase four is to deal with that. And then the big winner, this is one that's very personal to me, is a longtime former resident of Narstown, turning DeKalb Street into two-way. So that instead of being a one-way speed through, through our county seat and disadvantaged community, that we make it accessible to get into downtown, slow speeds, make it much more urban and walkable like it really always used to be. And then for us on the Septa side, Septa's gonna build a new Bridgeport Station on the high-speed line and upgrade their signal system on that, and that's what we're gonna see out of this new money here in particular. And then I put here the seven new bridges, and I wanted to label these because there's two things that are important here. One is that these bridges are all around the county. There are, I think, three in the middle of the county, one in the east, three in the west. And among those seven, there's two county-owned bridges. That's right. The county's own bridges that we own on our inventory are now in the tip, getting money from BRIP. They weren't getting it before. So we were able to use this to advance to more of our structurally deficient bridges.
Yes, I mean, yeah, good morning. Twenty-nine and one thirteen, what, do you have any idea what's included in that project?
It's gonna be turn lanes. A turn, it's gonna be turn lanes. I, I can't tell you exactly which turn lanes they're gonna put in. They're looking at all four, but they gotta balance it with right-of-way impacts. You have the bar on the corner.
Right, exactly. That's why I was gonna, yeah.
Yeah, so.
There's a restaurant, a bar.
Yeah, so that's gonna, that's probably gonna take a while because they have to figure out the environmental impacts and the right-of-way impacts. I think the township would love to just clear the whole intersection out between us, but obviously with federal money, you have to buy, buy NIPA and some other things. So it's gonna take some time, but yeah, turn lanes is what they're looking at.
So what, what's the timeframe again for all this money being spent?
Well, so that's the thing, is the, the IIJA prioritizes this investment over the next five years.
This is, we are gonna be seeing so much, so much, I don't wanna say tumult, but there's gonna be a lot of work. It means a lot of jobs. It means a lot of jobs, but there're gonna be big changes. So it's really important that whoever's overseeing these projects, that somehow they're signage saying, you know, this is your money coming to improve your lives, not just making everybody crazy. Because people are gonna be getting from one place to the other and having lots of challenges.
This stuff tends to normalize over time. All these projects are gonna take, some of these projects will take more than five years, I can guarantee it. But it's still, it's still a capacity issue, right? PennDOT and every state DOT has to make sure that all their districts have the people available to manage projects, oversee, design, sign off on stuff, so that's an issue we'll be dealing with.
And that's one of the feds' biggest concerns that they talk a lot about is the workforce. We're already in a deficit and now, this is wonderful. This is more funding than we've seen in transportation ever. But how do we get these projects to the street and how do we get them done is the challenge. They're already talking about, they're expecting that this is going to, you know, get extended for a year and a year. You know, this is gonna be the, the funding program for a while. And it's gonna be just like the last funding program, IST, in that, you know, it doesn't get a whole new authorization. It just gets extended and their biggest concern is awarding the money. It's a lot of money and there needs to be enough projects in the right position to win them. But then getting them through the engineering process and getting them through the construction process. It's probably, there's probably going to be more money, at least in the first couple of years, than the workforce can handle. So a, and a, a big topic of discussion is that there's very little within this funding available for building the workforce. There's very small pieces, and that's something that the feds would like to focus on and, you know, they may be able to address. But it's one of the biggest issues and, and there isn't at least a funding source right now to help with that.
All the problem is you still have the ARPA money that hasn't been deployed yet.
Right.
And most of that money has not been deployed. So you're still.
It takes manpower to get the money.
And you still have that in the pipeline. You also, now you're gonna have this in the pipeline, and that's the fear, that's the inflation fear.
Well, it's interesting, and I'll just take a quick detour, because as you mentioned, ARPA. ARPA, for the most part, is transportation not eligible under ARPA. There's small things.
I'm just talking about in general and the economy.
Yeah, but, but, but ARPA does fund things like water and sewer upgrades, which are also funded. There is billions in here for that, too. So, yeah, so there's, there's a lot of money on the street.
Right, and this is the inflation fear.
Too much money on this.
Put too much money in the system.
Right. One, I, maybe we should let you just get through your presentation.
You guys, you're the board.
No, no.
All right, so I'm gonna shift gears here. I'm gonna have Matt come up, talk about six or so of these competitive programs. Again, there's hundreds. These are the six that we think are the most relevant for our county and for our communities.
Thanks, Matt. And, yeah, I'll keep it moving, because I certainly appreciate the discussion, and there's all sorts of points I could make back to everyone. But in the interest, let's, let's get through everything and then we can get to some of the additional questions later on. I wanted to touch on six of these, and Matt mentioned that there's plenty of bridge money that has come through as a formula, and we're already seeing that reflected on some of our projects in the tip, county bridges getting into the funding pot. These six project, uh, programs are probably the ones you may hear about as a result of the IIJA. To your point, Dulce, whether we start putting signs up everywhere like we did after the two thousand and eight stimulus package, saying this project funded by recovery reinvestment. I don't know. I don't know if they happen to allocate money in the legislation for it or not, but they want to do some big things with the large amount of money that's available. For example, the Bridge Investment Program is going to be a separate and different competitive program for replacing bridges. You see, the most important thing I would, I list on this slide is both this line of the match and this line down here. The feds know that there are a large number of very large bridges that need some sort of major reconstruction rehabilitation efforts. You know, they, everybody's thinking about things like the Brent Spence Bridge in Cincinnati. That is going to take two billion dollars just to replace an interstate highway bridge over the Ohio River. So they have down here, fifty percent of the funding in this particular discretionary pot are set aside for bridges that are going to be massive. That are the ones that are go, that are, have been the hardest to get funded through the normal transportation funding processes. Just because all of the other allocations of money get spread out to all these projects and we run out and don't have enough for this. However, it's important to note that the match is also much, much higher. Ninety percent of the funding will be provided by the federal government for off-system bridges. Those are those smaller ones in, you know, different municipalities and rural areas. As we page through these other six slides and you're looking at the information that we have out here, we are also listing who is eligible to apply, along with the amount of money that's available, and whether the Notice of Funding Opportunity has already been released. This was such a massive package passed over a year ago that it has taken DOT and some of the other governmental agencies that are responsible for handing out things like water and sewer grants at least a year in some cases to get through all of the rulemaking and setting up of the program on the backend. So this one is out, but a couple of these other ones are still officially to be announced.
Matt, can I just jump in real quick and just tell the board, as you're going through these, there, there's a slide that we put towards the end of, of this deck here that it's worth just pointing out something to get your mind. That it's worth just pointing out something to get your mindset prepared for, for this. Is there is an emphasis on big expensive projects and there's an emphasis on equity. So keep that in mind as Matt goes through these slides, because you will see that come through. And we'll talk a little bit later in the presentation about the challenges and opportunities that means for Montgomery County.
Probably one of the most hot topics in mixed planning settings these days has been electric vehicle rollouts. Everybody knows that we're gonna start having more money available for chargers. This is the program where the federal government and the states are going to start trying to figure out how to say. We have a network of chargers that needs to be installed across our various interstates and highways. So that somebody is driving across the state and is afraid of running out of charge. Uh because they aren't, you know, they're traveling or they're going a, a long distance. So the National Electric Vehicle Infrastructure Program, we're abbreviating a, abbreviating it as NEVI. Um for the acronym, is money going to the states um to spend on. Individual locations for installing these sorts of charging infrastructure. Um you see, it's five billion dollars uh in the formula and another two and a half billion in grants. Um this basically is working out that Pennsylvania is expecting about a hundred and seventy-one million dollars over the next five years. This, the key point of this is they are currently focusing on making sure that our interstate highway network. Across the entire state of Pennsylvania has a charger at a maximum of fifty miles apart on interchanges. So. For now, in the southeast region where we already have a fairly robust network of chargers available for public use. Um we probably won't see a lot of this money in the first year or two. PennDOT is focusing on things like I eighty or I seventy-nine or I ninety-nine in the western and northern parts of the state. Where right now you can go a hundred and fifty or two hundred miles in between charging stations. They are trying to fill in all of those network gaps and every state across the country is trying to fill in those network gaps first. They have told us that there will be future rounds where they will be able to come back and fund locations. Um in and around this area, duplicate efforts, um you know, to expand the amount of supply for chargers that's available. Um but we're probably a couple of years away from seeing any of that in Montgomery County.
Yeah, I see, or down the bottom there, fund, funds chargers fifty miles apart, blah, blah, blah. Available to public and private applicants. So if I have. You know, ten gas stations and they don't have chargers, I have to match twenty percent. To be eligible.
Yes, yes. We are, the program is going to require some sort of applicant to. Have this. Um the, the funding is going to be for most of the construction and the electrical utility work that goes in to make sure that you have. Um proper amounts of, you know, high voltage lines going to these chargers, especially the. DC fast chargers require kind of a lot of voltage. Um but we are starting to work with. Um specifically, the one area in Montgomery County that might have some of this early on is the. Uh Lansdale interchange of the northeast extension. That's been identified by PennDOT as a place that is eligible for a gap. We're starting to talk with our partners at Partnership T M A, um and Townments and Township about how to say. You know, unfortunately, it ends up being the private applicants that have to make this. Um application up to the state because they're going to be the ones that are responsible for it going forward. So we're working to say, sorry?
There's no application yet.
They, I think, are supposed to have it out in the next month or so, so we're trying to lay the groundwork for everybody. Knowing that this is hopefully going to come, the, the state wants to have the first round of this decided by next June. Um so, you know.
There, there's. Here's a royal change of administration.
There's Royal Farms right there. There's a couple of hotels right there.
Starbucks is right there and they have a big parking lot.
That's where we met to talk about this at that Starbucks, so.
Nice Starbucks.
There's plenty of discussion going on around that this. You will certainly hear more about this in the future.
But remember, one of those, at least one of those businesses have to say, we want these and we'll put up the twenty percent. Otherwise, you don't get charters in that area.
And it has to be accessible twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, and a lot of businesses don't want to take that sort of liability or insurance.
If you're, if you're a hotel, you're happy to have it as a perk for your customers, but are you okay with the stranger? From Altoona stopping and parking in your parking lot for a couple hours? Big questions that need to be answered.
What, what's the cost of one of those chargers?
Ballpark, probably into the five figures at this point?
Really?
No.
Maybe low five figures, but.
Including installation, I think, yeah, it's, it's, John.
Especially a DC fast charger, Don Johnson.
John, John would know the number. John's got it.
Done for apartments, it's, you know, in that high. Single thousand digits, you know, eight to, you know, eight.
Eight to ten.
Eight to nine thousand dollars, but not the, not the fast chargers.
Right, fast chargers are two hundred and fifty thousand volts a shot.
That's what you need.
Don't stand in order when you're there. Yeah, you can stand in order.
And it doesn't work, you know, we'll fill your spot.
Right, exactly.
I don't want to talk about anyone dying via electrocution, so I want to keep moving through this. Um some of the other grants that we're, that we're working on. Um reconnecting communities uh is the identification of large-scale transportation barriers such as freeways. Uh wide surface roadways, um sometimes even rail lines would qualify under this. Um this is kind of more of a planning. Um grant program that's been set up there, though there will be construction dollars that are available after the planning is done. Um to figure out how to remove retrofit and mitigate, uh to re-knit communities back together. Uh you may have seen, I believe Secretary Buttigieg announced this standing next to Vine Street Expressway in Philadelphia. Um so that's on the scale that we're thinking about. We've talked about it for Montgomery County communities. Um at least one Montgomery County community, I believe, has applied for this. Um we're not sure how successful they're going to be per se, um just based on how many other situations there are across the country. Um for something as obvious as this that would need to be better re, uh refit. But it is um an item that's out there. And we do note that part of the problem with this particular uh grant program is that the grant recipient. Must own the facility that is being retrofitted. So you really have to say partner with PennDOT or Amtrak or some other. Um the item that is ultimately going to be done, municipality is going to have to go together and convince. Um their larger infrastructure owning partner, that it's a worthwhile application.
Right, commu- community, community wants to, you know, overcome these, these strods, right? That's a strode, six lanes. They want to overcome that. Problem is they don't own it. So you gotta, PennDOT to say, alright, yeah, we will constrict the flow of traffic and mobility in order to. Make this a more walkable, uh scalable type of road. And the same thing with highways. This comes out of the feeling um within some of the planning community that if we could tear down our highways, turn them into roads. Then we can better knit our communities together. Problem is, if we're gonna tear down a highway, you need PennDOT to do it. And to some level, federal highway administration. So this, this, this will be useful for main streets. And for, you know, some of our communities in a much more limited scale and that's eligible. Uh but again, there is always, Congress says, here's the program, the feds say, here's the guidelines, and then it's up to everyone else to figure out how it actually works.
Next one we have uh that we are actively working on with this is the safe streets and roads for all that, that Nicole mentioned earlier. Uh this is. Going to have two separate categories of funding. The first fund is going to be for um areas that. Completing a safety action plan to analyze all of the road network and figure out where the. Uh locations, intersections, corridors, et cetera, that need to be addressed for improving crashes and. Making roadways more safe. Um is all integrated into the first part. Once an area has a safety action plan in place, then the program is available to start uh using these implementation dollars. To fund projects in the plan. I can tell and share with all of you. When this came out, the region D V R P C looked at this and said, Philadelphia has a safety action plan already. Uh on the books, their Vision Zero Plan that would qualify. So what D V R P C has done is applied on behalf of the rest of the four county suburban region. For a safety action plan. So this is already in process. This application is off to uh the feds. Uh we're assuming, we're hopefully going to get it um with the strong support from uh the four different counties. Once that planning is done, then we're hoping in the future. As far down as municipalities, we'll be able to start going after um specific implementation dollars. To fund some of those projects that come out of the plan that will hopefully be worked on by the.
Looking to get funding for the safety action plan for the rest of the region other than Philadelphia.
Yes.
And D V R P C would then do the plan for the counties?
Yes, in conjunction with M C P C and our uh fellow planning commissions in the area. The last, the two more, two more that I wanted to talk through, um healthy streets, uh another. That's heavy on the uh equity piece of this is working with disadvantaged places to. It, as it says in the title, uh look at cool and porous pavement and possibly uh increase the amount of trees that are. You know, located on major streets, uh commercial district streets. Um this is the one that we've been working with a couple of municipalities already. However, the notice of funding opportunity is not published yet. So while we've had the early discussions with a place like Narstown, uh Pottstown and Lansdale. We're still waiting for that official no-fo to come out before we decide whether we should uh recommend that these individual municipalities should be applying for this funding. However, it's nice that this is out there, even if it is, you know, it's a drop in the bucket as compared to the one point two trillion dollar bill. But as compared to um a lot of other projects, it's not a lot of money spread out over the rest of the country. The last project and one that Matt mentioned earlier, Corridor ID program um is to help. Utilize all of that sixty-six billion dollars that's been set aside for passenger rail funding. Um by convert, a comprehensive inner-city passenger rail planning framework. Uh this is what the feds have basically told to us. Anywhere on Amtrak's uh large network expansion map that wants to have service added to it or restored to it. They're going to need to go through this program. Um there is about a quarter of a billion dollars included in this. There will be a match. Um but authorities and Amtrak are eligible to apply to this. Um since the notice of funding opportunity is not out yet, the Schuylkill River Passenger Rail Authority has not applied for it yet. But rest assured, as soon as that, your funding opportunity is out, it will be uh scrambled into action time. Um for the staff and uh members of the Schuylkill River Passenger Rail Authority.
Quick addition, we did submit a letter of interest to the authority and uh. Of, in, of late breaking is um in Pennsylvania, there were three quarters being submitted, that submitted that interest. Uh Allentown and Lehigh, I'm sorry, Allentown and Scranton area. And uh re- recent word is that Allentown is not likely to uh go follow through with that.
Already bankished one.
So explain this, so.
Yeah.
If. If an, if a municipality wanted to get a train station, so would you?
Reestablish.
No, reactivate, reactivate passenger rail along.
Okay.
What, what this is, this is, this is another version of, go back to uh um safe streets for all real quick, just scroll back, right? So remember here, this is one where you have to go for a planning grant first. And then if you get in their pipeline and you've done your planning work, they will fund the projects that are in the plan. Corridor ID is the same thing. Corridor ID is the planning arm of a larger investments to reactivate. Pass, inner-city passenger rail along corridors that are doing. So corridor ID is just a piece of.
Fox Chase line if they wanted to try to reestablish that.
Well, it's more for Amtrak, right? So Fox Chase Newtown would be owned by Septa, Amtrak would never run there. But this is where like the passenger rail are ready. Scott's part of the S R P R A. And so that group would partner with Amtrak, would make the application, would get the corridor ID money, be in that program, do a service development plan. Work with the different players and when that's all done, uh F T A or um F R A here, Federal Railroad Administration. Would say, great, you're in the program, you've got a list of these things, now we're gonna start funding these projects, go.
So all the work that's been done ahead of this is really helping us.
Yeah, they, they, they want, you know, Congress wants you to plan before they give you money to do stuff. Same approach that we take.
Make your real projects first.
Right, so, so this is, this two hundred and fifty million dollars is only for planning.
Correct. It's the precursor to a, a larger multi-billion dollar investment to expand Amtrak's reach.
Okay.
And make sure that they're using that sixty-six billion effective.
I'm, I'm having a really hard time holding this question somewhat thrown out there. Um. There's just so much information here and I find it. Interesting, exciting, stimulating. What do we have to do? You don't have to answer it now. What do we have to do as an agency? What do you guys need in, in terms of support, extra people to be most impactful? Have Montgomery County and our projects most impactful. So you don't have to answer it now, but that's what's zinging in my mind. Do we have enough? You know, people power and um to really help our municipalities, help you guys to do just. The work that we need as a county and as the partners for our municipalities to take full advantage of this stuff. So I'll hold the answer, but that's my question. It's just killing me right now.
I think we can answer that. While we go to the next section.
Let's wait till we're finished. I don't want, but I think it's.
Clock's already ticking. I gotta be across the street pretty soon.
Okay.
But, um just to run through some of the other competitive programs um that we discussed as part of this one point two trillion dollar bill. There's more money available for other types of infrastructure. This wasn't. As Matt mentioned, roads and highways was the largest part of it and bridges was a significant part, but a lot of other pieces um on that graphic that had the ten different categories present. Um so electrical grid resilience uh and drinking water revolving loan funds for funding water pipe uh repairs and replacements are in there. Um even things like clean school buses. Uh the state has tried to do a clean school bus program in the past. We heard from uh PennDOT officials that no one in the southeast ended up applying for clean school bus programs the first time around. We're hoping that the next time that program gets launched, which we heard is going to be probably within the next six months again. That will change for um some southeastern area applicants.
Um fuel not actually clean inside.
Yes, that important distinction, especially when teenagers are.
Possible, what's impossible.
Exactly. Um and additional, you know, work for E V charging at public installations for schools and parks beyond that DC fast charger. There's, there's going to be more interest and money for, again, expanding out as much of this clean fuel infrastructure as we're going to be able to do. Um as part of this large amount of money. I'll turn it back over to Matt. Um. We, we wanted to talk through the local and regional efforts quickly. I know we've already touched on a lot of this. Um in general, what we've talked about, what Congress is wanting to do, there's a lot of big projects that need to be attacked. There's a lot of equity-focused projects that need to be attacked. Um and as Matt just said, making those communities plan first and actually, you know, spend some money to make a good project. Is going to be very important, even though it's a nationwide competition, we're gonna be, you know, struggling with forty-nine other states. Um for this funding and a lot of the time, this discretionary program is going to be made by people with either in DC or. Influence with people in DC. So we'll see how this all works out. We're gonna do the best we can at our level. I think Matt has the best answer.
Decisions are being made at the federal level or is the decision being made at the state level?
For a lot of the discretionary programs, the decisions are going to be made at the federal level. For things that are formula-based, where the money comes into PennDOT and gets allocated out and flows down to the region. We will have a little bit of influence, hopefully, on some of it. But that is how. That's how federal legislation has been recently, is trying to re-centralize a lot of this, like the pendulum swinging back in that direction.
Federal government distributing those funds, the formulaire funds, I'm sorry, discretionary funds. Through different departments or is there going to be a single clearinghouse for evaluating?
No, it's everybody.
It's, it's, it's different departments. If you look at that four hundred and sixty-some page brochure, you'll see they have it grouped by U S Department, Department of Energy. Department of Transportation, um you know, D E, uh the Department of Environmental Protection. So. Yeah, it's, it's gonna be, e- each department has like a hundred different programs, right, to a master. So it's all gonna be run through those. The exceptions are gonna be though for certain things like NEVI, for instance, the electric vehicle chargers, the fifty miles apart. Where the money's going to the states, it's up to PennDOT.
Right.
To run that program. So that's why it's really important. It's easy to think of this as a federal bill and everything is standardized. It's not. Hundreds of different programs. You gotta find the program you want and then read very carefully how it's run.
So there's a big, there's a big fear in, in the country about. Being able to use this money for both of these programs, ARPA and the I J. Um and being able to administer the funds over a period of time, talk about the extension period. But there's a lot of fear that some of this money is gonna not get spent because. There's not a realistic way of, there's not a realistic infrastructure to. You know, start the grant application process, the evaluation process and the whole project going through. But also the imagine, the, the imagination aspect of it that has to come from those communities and. Entities that need to use that, that want the money and understand how to put themselves together and there's, there's a big gap. entities that need to use it, that want the money and understand how to put themselves together. And there's, there's a big gap. Quite a few words, there's a big gap in, there's a big gap in the understanding of some of this. So, you know, you're scratching the surface, but it's great, but you're scratching the surface.
So that's my question. I mean, do we need a whole group of therapy people to, when I say therapy or consultants, I'm being glid, to get this money out by helping the people who need to apply? I mean.
For, for the outside consultants to do.
I don't know if it's outside consult, I'm not saying, I don't know what it is, but clearly that, that connection, Stephen said, the capacity to make that jump, that leap is gonna take something or the money's not gonna get spent, it's not gonna get in the right place. So what do we have to consider? Whether it's a consultant or more staff in, in-house or, uh, county, uh, investment in that, I'm not sure, but.
Well, it's the employee pool, I mean, if we wanna beef up and put more staff on is difficult, whether it's here at the Planning Commission, Steve's office, my office. So I'm not sure that that's really at this point a viable option. Now, if there's, if there's a recession and all these young people get laid off, maybe they'll be available to to, to take alternate jobs.
Well, so you're talking about grant writing?
No, I don't mean even, I'm not sure it's grant writing, I'm not sure what it is, but what Stephen is just, he's, he's generally talking about what the concerns are in getting all these great ideas, all these great programs, you know, through to the people. The information gets to the people and then how they can use the information to, um, originate ideas that can then come back the other way. So I'm not sure what it is, but that gap is what is.
The reality is the need for person hours is across the board.
Okay, that's the one, good.
Understanding the programs and, I mean, just tracking all of this, I mean, they just, again, scratched the surface, understanding it, tracking it, then when you get to the point of completing the grants and submitting those and tracking those, then when you win, it's getting the projects done and, and, you know, it's, it's on down the line. The need for person hours is across the board. I don't wanna say man-hours, I wanna say.
I, I had a different phrase, I'll give my two cents since our bar is sitting down. I'll, I'm calling it administrative capacity.
Yep.
At all levels, you know.
All levels.
M C P C, we've already talked about it, staff levels. I think Pendot could probably double its workforce and still be behind on the amount of stuff that's trying to. There are a lot of programs that the list of projects that could be funded isn't going to be an issue. There are plenty of programs, especially on the equity focus, that we do need to spend some more time doing it. However, things like the long-range plan for transportation in the region, we still have a need two and a half times as large as the money that's available. So that we have a good list of projects that are going to be able to spend an awful lot of this money. There are certain programs, especially where we're focusing on the communities that haven't seen that investment before and haven't had the planning work done for them, where we could certainly use more attention being paid. So my, you know, direct answer to you, Dulcey, what can you do is continue to talk up all of these programs to everyone, especially municipalities that may have been behind the eight ball and not done a lot of this planning work already. Now's the time to start doing it, the money's gonna be.
I just wanna ask two newbie questions. One is, how does the county become aware of these programs? Like what's the, what's the process internally that you become aware of these grant opportunities?
Alright, so I'll answer that by saying, we tried to distill this, as you saw in the presentation, to focusing on the most relevant and important ones. So in transportation, that was most of the ones that we had. Uh, we didn't dive too deeply into some of the other sectors, right? But, you know, Drew and John, for instance, you know, uh, uh, if they're, they're, if they focus on the ones that are most useful for municipalities, if Matt and our team focus on the ones most useful for transportation.
Federal register when things come out, is that?
Yeah, we fo, we focus on those and we track those. If you try to track all three hundred programs, you look crazy. And the reality is, is that most of those programs aren't, our communities aren't eligible for. Or, or they weren't meant for Montgomery County, they were meant for rural communities somewhere in Kansas, right?
So it's the staff that reads the federal register when it comes up?
I think you're up to see if Pendot also does a good job of alerting us.
Okay, good, yeah. Okay, second question. Does the county have lobbyists that can help? When a grant application is submitted, I mean, yes, Dot makes a decision, EPA makes a decision, but how do we get our legislators to talk it up?
Yeah, so that's where our, um, relationships with, uh, Representative Madeline Dean, Representative Mary Gay Scanlon, that's where they come most in handy. We, we talk to them and their staffs regularly and we let them know, hey, you know, uh, Narsetown's applying for this or that, uh, Upper Morland's applying for this or that. Be aware of it, push for it. But yeah, to, to tap into discretionary programs is, it's, it's a bit of a quagmire, it's a bit of a risk. And I'm not gonna sugarcoat it, right? So I'm gonna answer your question, Dulcey, and then I'm gonna go to the last couple of slides where you can kinda see what we're doing and how we're trying to do it, so you get a sense. But tapping into this money, eh, we put it very bluntly, it's not a money tree, right? It's not like the Congress passes this and it's like, oh, great, how can Montgomery County just pluck the dollars off the money tree? There are a lot of booby traps on the way to doing that. So there's three things that we need to be aware of, deep dive. I hate to be the Debbie Downer here, but if we're gonna be realistic about this, we have to know what the obstacles are. Three obstacles. One is that it's a national competition, right? So no one at U S D O T cares too much about Montgomery County because they have every county in America and all their communities saying the same thing that we're saying. And we're, we're fighting with all those places too at some level. So whether it's Springfield, Massachusetts or Springfield, Monco, they don't know one from the other. So our projects have to be good, but you gotta remember this isn't formula. We love, we'd rather have formula money because when we know the formula money is coming to our region, coming to our county. Discretionary grants go anywhere. The second thing is that equity is a big, big piece of all those discretionary programs. So a place like Narsetown or Pottstown, maybe even Lansdale or some other spots, they have a shot at competing. But the places that usually do the most planning and most engineering work, a lot of the communities you work in, they're not gonna fare well on this because they're somewhat D O T is gonna say, you know, you're ninety-eight percent white, you're not getting this, right? Your median household income is a hundred, two thousand, you're not getting this.
What's the definition of equity?
Well, that's a big question too, but generally, we try to say it's a place that's defined by the feds as a disadvantaged community and they have, you know, certain percentages of, uh, of, um, poverty, certain, um, percentages of different race or ethnic makeup. Places like that, that's why Narsetown, Pottstown and maybe Lansdale can compete because they have, they meet those metrics. But so many of our places don't fall into that because a lot of this is meant for our cities and for our rural communities. Those are the real disadvantaged places in America. And then the last thing is willing municipality and partners, right? Counties can apply for stuff, but we don't own a whole lot. We need to have a municipality like Narsetown who says, we want to be part of the Healthy Streets program. If they say, no thanks, well, there goes the best shot for our county or somewhere in our county to tap into that. And it's hard, it gets back to the capacity, but also still gets back to the funding because almost all these programs still require a match. So those are the three things we gotta be wary of, is the nationwide competition, the equity component, and then having, getting our municipalities to say, yeah, we wanna be part of this, we wanna do it, we wanna spend some of our money to match it because they don't always wanna jump in on these things, right? So this is what we are trying to do, last couple of slides. So D V R P C, um, has been taking the lead on two of these programs. Matt was alluding to this before, Safe Streets and Roads For All, they're gonna make their own planning grant application, do that Safety Action Plan for a region, and that will have projects that come out of that, whether Pendot does those projects or whether our townships and boroughs decide to do them, we don't know yet. But at least we will overcome that first hurdle and we'll do it together as a region. Healthy Streets Initiative, same thing, um, even though we don't have the details yet, we've been part of discussions with D V R P C and Narsetown and Pottstown and Lansdale, see what projects they have that could get applied for under that program to lay that groundwork now. And lastly, D V R P C has an online web resource, that's a screenshot of it there in the lower right corner, where they just, you know, they have lots of stuff on lots of potential programs, you can go in there and search by, uh, by sector, transportation, energy, broadband, whatever it might be. What we're doing, besides working with D V R P C and partnering on those initiatives, we are also uh, working through the S R P R A and Scott has taken the lead on this wonderfully, uh, to try to get into that program to restore passenger rail reading. Um, and then we are gonna be working on our own web resource, we've started to sketch that out, started to put some materials together. It's not live yet, we still have a ways to go, um, but that is in our work program here for the next two months, let's say, wanna get that up. And we want that, unlike D V R P Cs, be focused particularly on what's useful for our townships and boroughs. D V R P Cs is great, it's very comprehensive, but we don't want our municipality saying, well, you know, someone show me where, we're gonna say, here's where you wanna look, here's what's most useful for you and narrow it down. So that is the run-through that we have. And I think to answer to, answer to Dulcey to answer the last part of your question, what do we need? I think it's probably just more staff time to work with D V R P C on those regional things. We've been working with our municipalities on a couple of things in our work program, trying to pro them to get to do stuff, and it is like pushing a rock up a hill at times. So I, I think it's just a little bit of time to be part of these regional efforts and it's gonna come in drips and drabs. It's not like we're suddenly gonna wake up and there's millions and tens of millions of dollars and I feel like it's gonna be doing this here, doing that there, pushing, pulling, it'll just be integrated into what we do.
Alright, um. Thanks Nicole for starting the alphabet soup.
Yeah, it's the transportation focused one, but it at least gets you started on, you know, understanding what, what everything means.
So, um, I can talk about this for the next two hours.
Yeah.
So I will, uh, not talk about it for the next two hours. I will have phone calls later about it, but not. Uh, that being said, um, I think we should, uh, think about bringing this back up in the beginning of next year and getting a little bit more in-depth into the things that we think would be, um, vital to Montgomery County and vital to, and what communities we should be, uh, we should be focusing on to try to capture um, as much of that discretionary funding as possible, uh, to help those communities. So I think that's something that we should program for a later time, either in January, February. Because I think it's worth it's worth putting together the effort within, within the county and the Planning Commission specifically, uh, to try to capture some of those things, especially considering some of the programs that you've put up here are things that we're working on or in some way, shape or form that we're working on. So, um, is there any other, you know, non-lengthy comments that board members have so that we can move on, um, given that we'll have an opportunity to talk about this again?
I agree.
So why, in January, if we could, you know, have a deeper dive into Monco specifics than rather than the overview that we've gotten today, I think that'd be great.
And then on January, only because we have, we, we might have the work program as a lengthy conversation in January. Um, but definitely with the January, February, we should reprogram this and, like I said, focus it back down to what we just talked about. Um, any other comments?
See, I'll just ask a follow-up question just for clarification for staff's sake. So are you envisioning that we might, uh, outline maybe, and I'm just gonna ballpark in there like a dozen different programs that we think are relevant to our county and work well? And have a discussion of matching that up with municipalities and potential projects?
On the surface, yes. I think we should have deeper conversation in, in our agenda meeting to try to focus that. Which may push us to the February period of time, so that we have.
An extra.
Yeah, like that seems like the follow-up meeting.
Yeah.
Or an extra meeting that we might have to, you know, if people are interested, you're just gonna have to put a little extra time into it and you have to tell us when it's time-sensitive for us to do that.
Corinne, do we have our agenda meeting next week?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
It might be that, it might be that program's identified and all of a sudden we have ideas about where that, you know, clue should be talked to in a municipality to get them interested in what's going to be.
Let's talk about it next week at a agenda meeting. And if we have to have a short conversation in January with the board just to refocus it and then have a, a deeper conversation in February, let's do that, but I think it's worth continuing to have this on the radar screen. Okay?
That sounds good.
Alright, thanks Matt.
Matt, would, would this be a subject that you could, you know, the, Makedo has a, like a spring convention and a fall convention. Would it be something that you could talk to the people and say, hey, we've got this boatload of money, you know, I'm sure a lot of them is, don't know about it. How about if we give a half-hour speech?
We are all, as transportation staff, I can always speak for our group, we are always happy to go to Makedo and talk and brief everyone on whatever the topic is that you wanted to know about. So you consider us for the spring or fall event, um, and we would probably give a similar thing about an overview of the I J and, and some relevant programs.
So it's something you'd have to instigate, I mean, I just know that they do have speakers come in.
Yeah, here I thought you were representing Makedo, but yeah, we, we're, we're, we always, we always have a staff discussion about Makedo and, and, and we propose ideas to their leader.
Okay, thanks Matt.
Alright, thank you.
Um, let's, uh, let's go back to community planning assistance contracts, or if I can bring you up and go through this quickly.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I do need to leave about twenty-five after, so.
Yeah, that's.
This is the only action I need. Are you singing?
I am not singing.
That's the only reason why I can't. Alright, alright, alright. Hold on, hold on for a second. Um, so we do need to approve immunity minutes, so, um, I'll make a motion to approve Montgomery County planning permission for immunity minutes for November sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. For a second.
Second.
Are there any corrections or comments on the meeting minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I would be opposed.
Alright, uh, three, three-year contract renewals for your consideration, East Greenville, Douglas and West Norton, they're all starting January first of twenty-twenty-three. Uh, East Greenville planner is, uh, Tim Kenechi. Uh, they are gonna be finishing their Main Street Design Guidelines and they're looking great, I'm really excited when that gets done to, to show the board and do a presentation specifically on that. Um, that's also a project we'll be able to transfer to, to other communities and use as a, as a really good template. Uh, that's been a great project. Uh, and then we'll be working on additional, uh, Planning Commission-directed work, uh, potentially some historic preservation work for them. Uh, Douglas Township, we will be doing an audit of their zoning ordinance and updating that as necessary, assisting them with grant writing and then looking at some Main Street revitalization, primarily Philadelphia Avenue and enhancements to that. Uh, West Norton, uh, that's Naomi Crim, as is, uh, Douglas Township. Uh, she's the planner and for West Norton, we're gonna be starting a comprehensive plan update, uh, at the beginning of the year. Uh, that'll take eighteen to two years of the, the eighteen months to two years of the contract. Uh, and then the last year we'll get into the implementation, which could be zoning or subdivision ordinance updates. Uh, so those are the three for consideration. I will just note on the resolution, uh, there is a, a correction for, uh, Douglas Township, the county portion, um, just needs to be adjusted to match the municipal portion, you can see there at the bottom.
Alright, first we have M C P C Resolution twenty-two dash twelve point one, Community Planning Contract Resolution, December fourteen, two thousand and twenty-two. Included in this resolution are three contracts, two nine eight, East Greenville, Carrow, January first, two thousand and twenty-three to December thirty first, two thousand and twenty-five. Total cost is forty-seven thousand five hundred eighty-six thousand, four hundred, forty-seven thousand five hundred eighty-six dollars. Split fifty-fifty between the municipality and county. Contract two nine nine, West Narden Township, same period of time. Total cost is one hundred and three thousand eight hundred and twenty-four dollars. Split fifty-fifty between the municipality and county. And then is that correct contract six five five? It just seems out of order.
I, I believe so. There's the, the Robin puts the numbers to them.
Amtrak number six five five, Douglas Township, same period of time, total cost seventy-seven thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars, split fifty-fifty between the municipality and county. As per, on our gen, on our resolution agenda item, uh, the county services should match the municipality services, thirty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars. And I so moves our second.
Second.
Any comments or questions from board members?
Good job keeping the.
Wheels turning? Wheels turning?
Yes.
Just a couple of things of note, real quick. Um, for these three renewals, uh, the, the planners are all relatively new to those communities. Tim's been with us for about a year and a half. Naomi, who has Douglas and West Norton, uh, was new in early twenty-twenty-two. Uh, so I, I think these renewals show two things. One, just the, the general strength of the relationship between these communities and the County Planning Commission and these renewals that they've done every three years for numerous years. Uh, but also the ability of the planners to quickly get into those communities and demonstrate their skills and abilities uh, that they feel confident renewing with them as their planner. So I, I think a lot of credit goes to, to Tim and Naomi for both of these, uh, as well as just the general work we've done for those communities in the past. Uh, we did two last month, uh, Lower Marion and Cheltenham, three this month. Uh, we have six remaining to go. Uh, we have, uh, indications from all those that they're gonna renew. War Sester is the only question because they might wanna have an increase in the contract and I currently don't have the ability to do an increased level contract. So I have a phone call with them tomorrow and we'll be hashing that out, uh, further.
Got it, that's it. All those in favor?
Alright.
Any opposed? I'm sorry, I didn't take any comments from staff or audience.
I'm concerned that we don't have enough to keep War Sester in as, we don't have enough staff to keep them. I think that's an issue that we have. I mean, I'm sorry.
And we're gonna try and be as creative as possible to maintain.
Over the years, they've been in and out and there's always something going on there that needs to be.
It's just that I have to get a clarification on what they wanna see done and, and try and match that as, as well as we can.
Alright, let's move on to our, uh, next agenda item, which is Narsetown. All right, let's move on to our uh next agenda item, which is Narx Town Dam on page on Drew and John. Morning gentlemen.
Well, that's getting set up by this bunch of.
Damn photos? Sorry, I couldn't, I couldn't resist. I think that was Chubby Chase, right?
We we just wanted to take a moment to update you on on this project. It's a really interesting project. We're not really looking for anything specific from you in terms of action today, although we want you to be informed about this so that when you're out in the community. It's gonna be a very public. Uh visible project and folks are gonna ask you, they're gonna say, what the heck's going on? You know, we want you to be aware of that. Also, and as you'll see, there's there's a fair amount of work that we need to do. In terms of uh providing studies and and background information. So if you're aware of any. Studies that have been done and we'll explain a little bit more, please let us know because the more that's already out there that we can bring in, the less we have to do from scratch. So. But John's gonna start us off and then I'll ramp up.
You stole all my thunder. Good morning, thank you. Thank you for having us. You get the pleasure of having the rare environmental planning tag team match. With uh Drew and myself. Uh we've both been working uh. Now Drew, I think, has been working on this project in one form or another for seven, eight years now. Um and I have come in um later on in the process as part of my work with the E R S, county's E R S program and our energy work.
I'm sorry, when did you say the project's on?
There's, there's been a lot of discussion about this. The project really, uh I'd say. What was the feasibility study that I remember? That was just a few years.
So. I was wondering if anybody showing my age.
Yeah.
This project has been going on, like we just said, for seven, eight years and it's been a journey. Um it's been a project where we've reached many decision points. Um many opportunities where the project could have ended or where we could continue and in the past that we could continue. Um we wanted to bring it to you today, as Drew said, because we are at a point where that is going to, you know, we are going to go into a very public facing. Aspect of this project with many more decisions ahead of us. So as we were talking about how to present it. Where I brought up the, it's like an old choose your own adventure. Yeah, and that's how this has progressed and this is how it will continue to progress. Um but as Drew said, really, what we wanted to do today, and we only have a brief amount of time, so we're gonna move pretty quickly. But we thought it was extremely important for the board to be aware of this project. Because hopefully it is entering into a very public facing aspect, which will have all sorts of regulatory requirements. And if we are very successful at the end of this. That's going to be a huge monetary investment with a big structure that is going to get built, which is going to be very invisible. So we thought it was extremely important for the board to be aware of this early on, to have an understanding of what we're doing. And to be able to hopefully be a champion for this moving forward. So the big project where we wanna get to, we wanna do a hydroelectric generation facility on the Norristown Dam. That is our goal. That is where we are hopefully heading. Um why would we wanna do this? We have an asset. We already own the dam. Um it is ours. Um so let's try to maximize its potential. Uh generating renewable energy works towards the county sustainability goals. Twenty nineteen, the county passed a resolution. That we are hoping to generate all of our, all of our electricity usage will come from renewable sources. By twenty thirty five, and this would be a huge, uh you know, step towards that goal. It is also energy independence. The mo- the, as you may know, the energy market is very volatile. Um the prices now are three times what they were. Um when the county got its first, the current electricity contract. So to be able to generate our own electricity, whether we are doing it ourselves or whether we are doing it through a power purchase agreement. Would give us stability. It would allow us to save money and it will allow us to get energy source. If we can, what they call microgrid, which means connect it basically an extension cord from the dam to our buildings. You know, it would allow us a sense of resiliency um as we're not reliant upon the PJM and the Pico. Energy transfer uh energy transportation system. So uh you know, these are all excellent reasons for us to be exploring this project. So our adventure begins to sit with the uh choose your own adventure theme. If you are not aware of the history behind this, in nineteen ninety three, Pico agreed to rebuild the Norristown Dam. Um and then they transferred the ownership to Montgomery County. So we are the owners of the dam. In two thousand and eight, as part of that agreement, they installed the fish ladder. Uh dating the restoration of the shad migration up to School Creek River. Um if you've never seen it, it's a pretty cool. Uh aspect to the park over on the Bridgeport side, you can go down and look at at that fish ladder. Um and I know just to. Jump the gun a little bit, the fish ladder, no matter what we do, will remain. So, yeah, that is not something that will be removed. So let's. With that is going to be one of those important talking points moving forward. Um and really, our idea of this exploration of hydroelectric generation began in twenty twelve. When the D O E's Oak Ridge uh National Laboratory did a study, a national study, looking at dams all across the country. Of which ones, based on a very high level, may have energy generation capability or uh capacity. Once that hit the streets. We started to get inquiries from private developers about, oh, you have a dam. I like to build dams. And the range has gone from very professionals to guys who pour concrete and they're like, I could build you in a hydroelectric facility. Um but that interest really sparked our exploration. Um in twenty seventeen, we hired Alden Laboratories to do a feasibility study so we could understand what the asset was that we possessed. Um it looked at the current conditions of the dam, of the river, the hydrology. And really for us, it was interesting to look at what was the available technology, what kind of turbines could they put in? That would be able to use the river to generate energy. Uh that two twenty seventeen study showed that hydroelectric generation was possible. We could do it. Uh but the economics at that time, based on the price of the turbines, the kind of prices that we were getting for our energy. Just made the R O I unattractive and kind of irresponsible to say, yes, we should do it right now. Um but what it did show, even in twenty seventeen with the older technology. The power that could be generated from the Norristown Dam would power all of one Montgomery Plaza. And based on the energy modeling, it would power the new justice center as well. So that dam could power both of these buildings in total with some extra to to sell or to use at another facility.
Hey John, wasn't Pico on the bridge in the first, uh the dam in the first place?
They, yeah, for the, they, there was a electric generating facility on Barbados Island at one point and they needed. I'm trying to think if it was a joint venture with the water company for for dam pool for their, for their intake as well, but. They needed the pool to draw water for cooling for that generating facility.
So over the course of those years, the twenty seventeen feasibility study was a public document. As energy prices started to rise and as more and more funding became available federally and state. On the state level for renewable energy projects, we've gotten a stream of developers come in. To talk to the county about doing this sort of project. Um it made us realize that. We really needed to take another look if we are getting these developers in. And we understood that through the FERC process, the the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. That another developer could actually do a project on the Norristown Dam without us. They could, they could get, as we like to say, technically, they could get dibs on it. So it was one of those, we really need to explore this. We want to understand what our stake is and what our understanding is. So um we did an R F I. Cause we wanted to get information from the developers of what could be possible. Uh we got just enough information from that R O I. R F I to understand that we're still interested, but there's more that we needed to know. So shortly after that, we did an R F P, understanding that we would need a technical consultant to help us through this process. And we wanted to get from that R F P process. A better understanding of, is it worth our investment to pay a consultant to explore these? And the answer was, and we've gotten a tremendous amount of support from the commissioner's office. From the financial, from the purchasing, from everybody throughout the county that, yes, we are. Committed, we are serious about exploring this. It is a viable project. We wanna know what we're uh getting into. So we did choose Alden as our consultant. And we have been working with them to do a permitting analysis and an updated feasibility study. Um so I'm gonna hand it off to Drew, cause he's gonna walk us through the next steps in our adventure.
So the adventure continues. Uh we just reached a decision making point uh not too long ago, uh looking at the various permit options. Uh that that FERC offers. FERC again is the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. And after looking at it and relying a lot on Alden, Alden is a a nationally recognized expert in this type of. Uh project. They've done a number of hydroelectric facility sightings on dams all across the country. Uh they're located out of uh Massachusetts. They uh they've been an invaluable source of of information for us, but they helped us understand the various um. Permit options and some of them are extremely complicated. Uh they told us that the FERC process for uh the the standard FERC permitting process for a hydro. Is probably the most. Complicated and convoluted processes uh for an energy project. So. There's many options. Uh the one that we have chosen to pursue is the exemption process. An exemption, that sounds really easy. Oh exemption, we don't have to do anything. That's not the case. As you'll see, uh the exemption process is shorter. It should be less expensive. Uh but it's not easier. Uh that list of potential studies there, and and they are potential studies. Is uh it's it's incomplete, uh but it's 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 pretty comprehensive. These are the types of studies that could be required. When we begin the permitting process, when we begin to put the exemption application together, one of the first things that happens is D E P. FERC, a number of other agencies like the Army Corps of Engineers or uh D C N R. They can weigh in and say, you know, we we need a, we need a muscle study or we need a, you know, um. You know, some recreational study. There there used to be the Port Indian Regatta. Is this going to preclude chances of the Regatta ever coming back? All sorts of studies can be suggested. FERC makes the final decision and Alden has told us that they, they have people that used to work for FERC. They've had people that continually, you know, interact with FERC. They can influence the final decision so that we don't end up with a list of thirty different projects that we have to come through. Only the ones that really apply to our project. We hope to be uh responsible for. And as I mentioned, there could be projects out there. Uh or studies out there that were done recently. I know there've been some red bellied turtle studies. Uh there was the fish passage study done for the for the for the fish ladder. There's been some eel studies done further down. So there could be studies out there that we can just get and and that'll save us some effort as as well.
Entertainment, is that?
Fish, fish and trainment, fish and trainment. John, John. John's always looking for an opportunity to put on a costume.
I'm saying for the public process, when I have to go out to the stakehold. That'll be the fish entertainment.
You know, so in an effort of time.
Yeah. I got like a pair of four slides here to go. So as I've been mentioning, D E P and FERC are really the ones that guide the process, but this particular, this is important because. As much support as we have from the commissioner's office. It's not a cheap project. It's been estimated, and you can see there, eight hundred thousand, one point two million, two years to get the the application together to pull everything together. Once we get the exemption completed and submitted and and approved, we're at another decision point. We can then sell the dam if we choose to, because it's got value added with the exemption, uh the permit exemption. And that would, we would no longer be responsible for the maintenance upkeep and liability of owning a dam. So that might be attractive. The other end of the spectrum, we could fully finance, develop and operate a hydroelectric facility on the dam. And in between, we could bring on a private entity as a partner and work out some arrangement for how the power gets distributed. The 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 microgrid is an attractive uh option. You know, it keeps us up and running in the event of a storm knocking out power. As long as the river's flowing, we can generate electricity.
Couldn't you lease it?
We could, we could.
I wouldn't lease, I mean. Why isn't that an option that?
Yeah, okay.
And that's probably, and we are far from it, but that would probably be the most attractive at this point.
We're not, we're not operation experts. We probably would lease that out.
Yes.
I don't have that.
I don't have it.
But we do have that figure.
We have, we know what it is for one Montgomery Plaza. We have what it's. The design is for the justice center. So I do not have it off the top of my head. I could get it to you.
So to wrap it up. Where we are next, immediate next step, the capital plan gets approved in December. This is part of it. Once we get that approval, we tell FERC to go ahead. They file an intent to apply. With FERC, it's just a four pager. It's really simple. And then we begin that long process of pulling everything together and satisfying FERC's requirements. A lot of what FERC will require involves public activity. We have to contact, for example, everybody that's got access. Pro- excuse me, property adjoining the dam pool. I mean, that's, 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 that's huge. Anybody who's got an interest in in the flow of the river, we have to contact. So that's a lot. And and you'll find, I'm sure, you'll be out at some event. And someone's gonna pull you aside and say, you know, I've heard something about, so you, you are part of our ambassador force out there in the community. So there'll be many opportunities to uh to talk again, but we wanted to bring this in front of you to make sure you you knew what was going on. And be sure to refer to it as the dam project.
The third chapter of your adventure story.
Right, yeah, third chapter.
Is gonna be in the capital budget that hopefully be passed.
That's for, yeah, yeah, and that is for the um, that's for any studies that we need to to pull together.
So you didn't have the cost, you didn't have the va- the cost of the energy for both buildings. Do you have a payback timeline?
That will be an updated payback would, is going to be included in the updated feasibility study, which we should have.
You have a non updated payback?
Actually, no. Because what we saw in twenty seventeen, I don't even, it's. Basically irrelevant at this point. The technology has improved for the microturbines. Enough that the generation, power generation is significantly more than what they could do even in twenty seventeen. And the cost of our energy has increased dramatically. So not only for a project like the Norristown Dam. Uh but for a lot of our renewable energy projects and for our energy conservation projects, the R O I is going to. Improve greatly because we're just going to pay more for traditional energy sources.
And Alden is getting us that.
Start all of my questions. One more. Do you have a, asked, do you, in your mind, do you have, either one of you, do you have an idea, are we talking about a payback in? Decades, in less than a decade?
So you're asking the same question as you're probably.
Exactly.
That's why I get identified right away.
Can go for the record, that's the same question.
Look, I'll tell you what, it's it's as soon as we get the feasibility study back from Alden, we'll give you some, we could, we could say ten years. But I'm not sure it would mean, it would mean anything and I certainly don't wanna get a number out there.
The feasibility study.
It should be, we were expecting it this month, but.
Oh, okay.
Next month, I think we'll we'll definitely have it. Um if I say ten years, you're gonna, Steve, you're gonna come back and say, you said ten years. Uh five years from now, you're gonna be telling me, you have, you know, you said ten years. So I don't wanna say a number out there that's gonna become written in stone.
I've never seen that sign. So how much is, how much was the uh feasibility study?
Oh, wow, around forty thousand.
Yeah.
To that, yeah. I mean, there, it's it's a fair amount of work for 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 them.
And that included the permitting, that included the permitting analysis to make, to guide our decision of which permitting option. And then it includes the updated. And then it includes the updated feasibility study. There is a phase to the contract, if we do decide to move forward with the exemption process and even into construction management, we can, that, that RFP will carry us through with Alden, you know, as our consultant.
Who's the county's contact on all this, is it you calling this, is it?
It's actually John, this, 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 this is, this is, this is John's barely work, and.
One last question.
Yeah.
So since considering there's already a dam, is there any, is there any possibility, or is there any, um, thought that more land would be taken up by the waterway or the pool? Or is it going to maintain?
We're not going to see a change in the configuration.
Reason.
In fact, we, you know, the county owns a little bit of land on, on either side, but we don't really have much influence on, on it. We don't own any land, really anywhere.
Not like the China.
No, 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 it's not like the gorgeous dam, it's not, no. They're not raising any, raising the height of the dam.
Right?
Yeah.
Well, what happens when we, we're in a drought?
Well, the, the flow of the, 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 the river will continue to flow over the dam, because even if there's less flow coming in, it's a, it's not a, it, it's not an impoundment in that it holds the water back if the water continually flows over. As long as there's some flow, the pool will fill up and then spill over, and then as long as there's water going over the dam, we can generate some, some energy, of course, we want a steady flow to generate the maximum amount. During a flood, we'll, we'll be raising some of the equipment out of the, the, the dam, just to protect it from damage. But during a drought, uh, unless there's no flow in the river at all, which I can't imagine, we'll, we'll continue to generate.
And that operation would be John also, right?
John will be turning the crank, yes. In the rain, he'll be out there turning the crank, pulling the chains.
That's why I got kids for you.
Come on, it's time to go to the North Town Dam. How do you, how do you monitor that? No, I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't flood between eight and five, I mean, you know, the flood range has always happened when there's nobody around. Now you're going to change to the pumps and.
We'll have a, I, I imagine, or this is, this is my, we'll, we'll have an op, we'll have an operating entity. Who's responsible, that will be their responsibility, there'll also be remote monitoring. Uh, we have two marsh dam that tells us, yeah, there's, there's two marsh that tells us when the flood is coming, when it's going to crash.
I was thinking you, you didn't even have to wear some boots, no.
You know, I'm looking at retirement in a few years, I can sit out in a booth by the dam and push a button to raise and lower stuff, and that's, that's fun, so.
These types of projects have been done around the country, so they have, you know, Drew and I are not the experts on, on hydroelectric generation facility operations, but we do know, you know, people thought about these sorts of things, and there are systems in place.
What's the depth of the dam, what's the height of the?
That, I mean, that varies, if you've ever noticed, uh, going across the bridge on one side of the island, it, it can get pretty dry and rocky, on the other side, it's almost always flowing because the, the, the profile, it's very shallow on the Norristown side, but on the Bridgeport side, it's, it's, uh, ten or fifteen feet deep in places, so.
Who owns Barbados now?
I think that's a developer, unfortunately, that owns it.
Is it what?
A developer, not, no offense to developers, but I, I, I don't want to, I, I would, I would shudder to see housing on the, the Barbados. It's completely in the floodway.
Let's move on.
Yep.
I appreciate it, Jen, thank you.
Thank you very much, Jen. Come here and sing.
Thank you for answering a hundred percent of my questions, I appreciate that. I'm a profession. Okay, so Scott, yes, let's plan our next, I mean, five, twenty minutes, twenty, yeah, twenty minutes.
Yeah. As long as you're Bridgeport, I suggest we go to Bridgeport and then, uh, both of them, downtown here anyway, so that we can do it next month, but, uh, hopefully be there.
Okay.
And then I'll tie it up with the work program and director of work, which can be very brief.
So Bridgeport Borough Community Planning Assistance Presentation, Matt Lubitz and Claire Warner, good morning.
Good morning. Hi.
Sorry for the delay.
No worries.
And I apologize ahead of time for
Any questions.
I'm moving you along.
Yeah, I, we will try to be quick here, so, uh, my name is Matt Lubitz, I've been with Montgomery County Planning Commission since about May. Um, I'm here with Claire Warner, so I'm the current, uh, uh, planner for Bridgeport Borough. Uh, Claire was, uh, the planner for the previous contract. Bridgeport is a steadily growing community, um, and it, uh, projects out to be a little bit, uh, younger than the US and the rest of Montgomery County, um, at median age of thirty-one, and uh, with a significantly lower household income than the United States and the rest of Montgomery County, um, at the figures on the screen here. You may be wondering, uh, why, uh, the contract on that first page started in July. How this works? Anyway, just bang it, just bang it against the wall a couple times.
Bang it, bang it against his head.
Yeah. All right. I mean, okay, I'll try harder. Um, so, uh, Bridgeport was pretty preoccupied, uh, with the follow-up to Hurricane Ida, significant flooding. Um, that is still, uh, an ongoing, uh, issue today. Um, so that delayed them, they were not prepared to renew in, uh, for January, so the contract, uh, started July first. Existing land use, so some of the notable, uh, spots, uh, on, on existing land use would be, um, along, uh, Falcon Street and Fourth Street, uh, principal, uh, commercial corridors. Uh, even within those commercial corridors, significant residential development, um, along, along those stretches as well, as long as obviously extensive residential communities with, uh, commercial and institutional uses, uh, spread throughout.
And the river is to the top.
Yes, so the, the river is this white area right up here. So, which you can see on the aerial, is the river, um, the, uh, Chester County, uh, Chester Valley Trail, uh, is going to come through approximately through here and up across there, um, Bridgeport also has some, uh, significant open space and informal parks. And, uh, this, uh, former industrial site, which is the future, uh, potentially a future home of a major River Point development that we'll talk about, uh, in just a minute. Let me pass this clip.
Thank you, Matt. Um, my name's Claire Warner, I am the former community planner for Bridgeport Borough, um. During that previous contract period, we worked on the comprehensive plan that was adopted in April twenty twenty-one. Um, and then after that, there was some lull in activity because of the flooding that happened on the Hurricane Ida. We also worked on their transit-oriented zoning districts that happened, I'm kind of at the beginning phase of the comprehensive plan. And the one, um, significant land development that happened during that contract period was, um, for the River, River Point's development.
Yeah, what was the, uh, density for the TOD, do you remember?
I recall exactly offhand.
Today's guy.
I'll have to look, um, I'll have to look and get back to you on that, I can't remember that week. Okay, um, sure. Um, so for the comprehensive plan, it began summer twenty nineteen, it was about a two-year-long process, um, also somewhat delayed because of COVID and adjusting to online meetings, et cetera. Some of the major goals and priorities of the comprehensive plan were to create more open space, um, exist, and improve the existing open space areas, and to build economic revitalization efforts, uh, specifically along those commercial corridors of Fourth Street and Decob Street, to improve transportation accessibility, um, integrate more sustainable, um, development practices and promote the preservation of their really intact neighborhoods and some of their, uh, significant historic structures. Um, they have a lot of industrial development there along the riverfront. So the other part of our, um, comprehensive plan process was this TOD-specific zoning district area near the Decal, uh, Decal Norris Town High, the Decal Street Norristown Highspeed Line Station. There are two stations, uh, two highspeed line stations in Nor, in Bridgeport. The Decal Street Station and the Bridgeport Station, the TOD district would only be around the Decal Station, but perhaps in the future, it could be considered for the Bridgeport Station as well, um, based on the future land use plan, and Matt can touch on that a little bit. Um, during that TOD process, we did some renderings and built-out analysis of that station area. We also did an executive summary-type document that, that summarized kind of the important design concepts and TOD principles, some of which later got integrated into the model TOD ordinance. Um, and the TOD was adopted and the zoning map was amended with those changes. And the last part of this presentation for me is this major development along the riverfront. Um, it's nicely related to the Norristown Dam, um, presentation that we saw earlier, this is.
Part of the TOD ordinance?
This is not, this is along the river, so that.
Before you go to that, there hasn't been any proposals within the TOD district?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
And what's the properties around the station? Are they smaller properties that require assemblage to take advantage of TOD, or are they already?
They, they are, um, they would be, they're large enough to be able to be developed as they are now, they wouldn't have to be consolidated.
So there already is property that?
Yes, it's primarily commercial right now, um, and some kind of open parking areas, I think that would be, um, that would require a lot of assemblage in advance.
I counted three inches in the row.
Yeah.
Not a roll.
I mean, Claire's is really pretty good. It's the other guys that don't want to give answers.
So the, the Riverview Development, or I'm sorry, River Point Development, um, would be a three hundred and forty-eight townhouse unit and two hundred and sixty-two apartment unit development, that would also have a very small portion of commercial. And this is, this is the river. And the main street corridor is kind of on the bottom part of the slide. Um, this rail line that you see here is the, um, freight rail, freight rail line that kind of bisects the borough. Um, there is some open space that would take the form of a trail along the river, it would be a mulched trail, um, as well as some old parking area, um, integrated throughout, yes.
Along the river.
Yes, so we, we did meet with the, during this review process, uh, Montgomery County Planning Mission staff, the borough staff, and the developer did meet to discuss some of our recommendations, recommendations that were related to the trail development, being mulched trail, um, and generally just the design of the development as a whole. Uh, PDC.
From the properties.
Oh, from?
From, yeah, other destruction, or at least the site improvements are.
Yes.
They, they're already like two hundred and fifty thousand yards itself.
Right, so they, they've already started filling the site, um, the retaining wall is complete, I believe, at least part, partially. Um, but they still need land development approval. And they also have some sewer inlets in place, um, and I guess the first buildings, they plan on really constructing beginning and, construction beginning in twenty twenty-three. Um, but it hasn't gotten approval yet, so we'll see how that goes.
So, so let me go back and ask two questions. You have many, how many units is it, two townhouses?
Uh, three hundred and forty-eight townhouses and two hundred and sixty-two apartment units.
I gotta write that down, because I can't do the math like Matt, three hundred and forty-eight townhouses?
Yes.
And how many apartments?
Two hundred and sixty-two.
And how many acres?
Total acreage, um, don't know offhand, I don't have this written down, um, they would have four hundred and forty thousand square feet of open space, um, and seven thousand square feet of commercial.
So their open space is in the floodplain and.
Not, not, not buildable.
Yeah, so they got credit for that, to that though.
And, and a, a few perks, I think, but yeah, mostly, mostly it would be a river, riverfront.
Do, do they have to be involved in a traffic impact fee or anything? You know?
I do not know.
Or a traffic study?
I would hope so, but do you know?
All right. I don't know the history, I'm not sure exactly if they, I'm, I would assume that the, this would trigger that in, in their ordinance, but not, uh, that would have, yeah. I haven't seen any results or anything like that.
When you have chance, acreage of the property comes to help, property would be helpful.
Yeah.
Let's, let's, we can move on, unless somebody else is.
Oh, this is just aerial image of the property, um, you can see, and this is from near map, you can see it's already under construction, as you were saying, just like so, and that's just an historic image of the the former factory buildings that were there, um, that were required to spread them in twenty eleven. Um, and this is just, for your information, Matt mentioned it earlier, um, this is not part of the community planning assistance contract, but that the Chutter Valley Trail extension is under construction going through Bridgeport, um, to connect to Norristown, um, the School River Trail, which is a significant development for the borough, and to bring people through the borough and also for the residents to connect to the trail network on, in the county. And back to Matt for the upcoming contracts.
All right, thanks, Claire. Um, so, uh, the major project, um, that is, uh, now underway is the rewrite of the zoning ordinance. Um, this was recommended within the, uh, within the COP plan, um, and so some of the main focuses right now of the rewrite would be, um, creating a, a use-based code, so organizing a single article with uses, definitions and regulations of, of all the uses, uh, for ease of use and easy interpretation. Um, and this is a good opportunity to catch a lot of uses that have kind of fallen through the cracks over the years, um, and, and regulate a lot more of the modern uses, um, like Claire was talking about earlier, enhancing the commercial corridors. Um, and so, uh, one aspect of that is, uh, I've written, um, a zoning amendment that we're waiting for Bridgeport to adopt, um, that eliminates, uh, required parking minimums for commercial uses, uh, in the neighborhood commercial zoning district. So primarily that is, uh, Fourth Street and Cobb Street, um, additionally in that area, um, requiring first-floor commercial if you're going to build any residential, so no residential-only, uh, district. So again, we're waiting on adoption for that, um.
Space ordinance, is that just on the commercial corridors?
I'm, I'm sorry.
The use-based ordinance, is that?
No, so the use.
Commercial corridor or all of Bridgeport?
That's going to be, uh, all of Bridgeport, and it's, uh, really, it's not necessarily a change in the function of the zoning code, but really an organizational tool, um, for us to, to keep everything in one place within the ordinance that can then, um, pretty easily be amended and referenced and, and all that. So, but that's going to refer to all uses throughout the, throughout the borough.
Right, okay. Still advocates, you, when you said, you're, you're responding to others on similar damages.
Similar maybe in form, but, uh, not necessarily function.
Got it.
Um, another priority, infill development and adaptive reuse in a borough like Bridgeport, um, that is significantly, uh, built out. A lot of the opportunities are going to be redevelopment, it's going to be the little areas that are undeveloped, how do we best, uh, you know, uh, guide that development to meet the needs of the borough, and then also adaptive reuse, making sure that we're not losing, uh, important structures and encouraging, um, encouraging these older buildings to be used with, uh, modern, uh, attractive uses. Um, and other general updates to meet current conditions when a zoning code hasn't been updated, um, seriously in a long time. A lot of things, a lot of best practices, a lot of other things like that, uh, should be included, um, and this will be a good opportunity to take care of that.
Uh, is there any affordable housing requirements and any of their, any of their thoughts?
There's a lot of talk, there's been a lot of talk already about affordable housing, I think they, uh, the, the steering committee that I'm working with on this has been, um, uh, they're pushing for small A affordable housing, um, so that's more informal ways, market ways to keep the price of housing down, as opposed to the federally subsidized capital A affordable housing, um, so that, that's the route that they seem to be taking at this point, um, so. Um.
If you could wrap, wrap up, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I have a question too, you also want to say something.
Oh, I know, but I didn't see there.
Yeah, uh, the question that I have is, have we measured if there will be some impact in displacing families eh, under all this development? Are we expecting some gentrification and some families that has been there for decades or, or many years to be displaced while we redevelop or what is the rebel, the development, or the resonating?
So if I'm understanding the question, uh, you're asking about, uh, potentially displaced families as part of the rezoning and the development that's going on on the riverfront.
Yeah, can you identify, can you identify? Yeah, can you identify, can you identify families that might be displaced for this?
So I don't believe as a part of either, uh, that there will be any displaced families. The project is not, um. The development is going in entirely in this area up above the neighborhoods here, so there should be no change to this neighborhood. Um, in here, uh. Which is the, the, you know, the, the residential area that's adjacent to that. Um, additionally, as far as the rezoning goes, um. Any existing housing or anything like that is not expected to necessarily change, um. Any existing housing, for example, uh, any existing housing that would become non-conforming. Uh, because of any updated zoning, um, that is not expected to change necessarily and that would be allowed to legally continue. Um, unless the building, um, was intentionally, uh, torn down to be replaced.
And thank you for the answer and also about the, the, well, the affordable housing, Steve already questioned that. Uh, that will be for me important to see what are the full considerations of affordable housing. And also the traffic, it was already mentioned, right now the traffic as we know is not easy, especially in that area. Therefore, what are the considerations and what will be the way of the contribution of this red development? To help with the traffic, no?
Yeah, so that, that's a very good, uh, very good point. I'm not quite sure the specific considerations that this development and the developer has taken. With regards to traffic, um, in Bridgeport, um. I'm not sure what that process has looked like. I, I know, I do know that the project is nearing final approval. Um, and those considerations probably have been talked out in front of, uh, council at some point, so that'll be something that I'll need to look into and provide. Potentially an update on, on the specifics of that, um.
Yes, like normal, normal land development, uh, processes, we don't really have the controls over those aspects so much as, as the local officials do. Uh, Bridgeport has been very, uh, uh, high on this developing, getting this area developed for, for many years. Um, predating our, our contract with them, and although we have had a lot of conversations across that time. Express some of the things that you're identifying now, um, that, that you might otherwise prefer, but, um, yeah.
Just to quit, let me, one, couple last points. Uh, also, uh, we'll be working on a parking study, um, in these. Fourth Street, Decalb Street areas here, um, to, with the ultimate goal of, of finding a potential future parking lot. Um, to relieve some of the pressure, uh, since there is not room for much off-street parking. Uh, as, as a part of any development that comes in. Um, additionally, map changes, uh, this is a map. Um, that we put together to potentially be adopted with some, I highlighted some of the smaller changes, uh, uh, the neighborhood commercial moving up. Uh, to the river on Calb Street, some other small changes in here. Other future changes might include, as Claire said. Um, the TOD expanding to the Bridgeport Station and also potentially changing this area in here that is not being. Uh, not a part of the, the development, um, that is remaining as it is potentially changing that to a residential. Uh, zoning district. So in terms of contract, uh, usual, uh, sort of contracts, uh, in Bridgeport with the only difference starting, uh, this July instead of. A January start date.
And, great. Well, I apologize to both of you for questioning your, uh, misinformation. Bridgeport, the retail is seven thousand, I just got this from Mike.
Yes.
Seven thousand square feet on point five acres, multifamilies, two hundred and sixty-two acres, excuse me, two hundred and sixty-two units. On nine point five acres, twins are three hundred and forty-eight units on two hundred, on twenty-five acres. That's six hundred and ten units, seventeen point seven dwelling units per acre. Thank you for that.
Take the overall, I think, twenty-eight view per acre.
What's that?
Twenty-eight D U's per acre, thanks to you overall, that's the exactness.
It's the mixed-use riverfront district currently.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Thanks.
Scott?
Yes, uh, so I just wanna give a quick update. The twenty twenty-three work program, uh, in past years, we've kind of done our extensive presentation in December. We're doing it a little differently this year and you'll get a larger presentation in January. But you are receiving the draft document, which is, uh, essentially final draft, but still with, uh. Open to updates and, and there might still be a typo or two to find, but, uh, we're giving this to you now, please, uh, take an updated review over the next month. And when we come back in January, uh, we'll give a, a bigger overview, but won't be touching on everything and try to keep that. Uh, truncated a little bit. Uh, just to note, we kept to the same format that was introduced last year with the seven focused topics. However, a couple of those have been reworded in terms of their title, essentially contain the same types of projects or in some cases the same projects. Uh, as prior, but you might notice that. And again, I emphasize, we do look at the short, medium and long-term length projects. Only the short terms are intended to be completed over the next year. The medium is essentially one to two years. And then long term would take, uh, three years or longer or be an ongoing, uh, concern. So. We knew last year, uh, the twenty-two work program, uh, was a bit over, uh, uh. Inflated with, with work. We did not get to all of it for various reasons. Uh, we talked about some of that in the middle of the year progress update. Uh, so I think this is still a pretty, pretty strong and pretty extensive list, but we were keeping in terms of the short term and, and the phasing. Of things, uh, we're trying to give a better eye on what, what can be done and what's expected after that year. So. Um, I'll leave it at that in the interest of time, uh, but you can. Get the, uh, overview of the different sections that are included within it, uh, by the end of this. Uh, I'll also share, for those who aren't here, I'll share the digital copy to everyone, so you have a PDF version as well. Any questions on that? Great. Um, and then finally, uh, we have the, uh, County Courthouse Choir starting at eleven, so we're gonna. Fly through the director's report right now. Uh, just mentioned a couple of things for staff. I wanna congratulate Andrew Turner, our transportation section. Who received his AICP certification and passed the test, uh, a couple of months ago. Um, so, uh, great congratulations to him. Also, Simon Bernard, uh, graduated from the American Walks Walking College. Which was a proper year-long program, uh, set up to build capacity of, of local advocates, uh, to advance walkability policy and. And, uh, all the issues along with it. And he learned a lot from that, uh, experience and congratulate him on the effort. Uh, I'll, we have a new intern, but he's not with us today, so I'll introduce him next month and maybe he'll be able to join. Uh, the Monca twenty forty grant, the, the county budget, uh, is up for adoption tomorrow at Board Commissioners. Uh, and is expected to be adopted. If, uh, no other changes occur to the draft. Uh, we are pleased with the, with the results of what's in there. Funds, a lot of good capital projects that we're involved with. Uh, there were a lot more strains that are coming to rise on the, on the county's budget, uh, which we've talked about. Um, so, uh, but that said, um, we have more funding for the comprehensive plan effort for next year. Um, that was, that was, uh, included, so as well as a staff update. Staff compensation is, 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 uh, very good. It's higher than it had been in previous years. Yeah, four percent. Well, it had, we had a mid-year update as well, so, uh, we're thankful for that. Uh, new positions, uh, they've been very. It's been very hard to get any new positions across the county and any department. That's, uh, most of the ones that were funded, uh, were based on grant money covering that. Those expenses, so that, that does continue to be an issue, uh, that we still have, are trying to get, uh, additions in twenty twenty-three.
We have opening?
We have five openings, so, yeah, the same ones that we had last month.
There were no funds.
No, we, we have, the positions are open. I'm in trouble filling.
Oh, gotcha, okay.
Or some, some are just coming up.
Okay.
Uh, and the Monca twenty forty program is, uh, is included in the budget at two point five million dollars, the same level we had last year. Uh, so if that gets passed as is, then we'll officially launch that. Probably the following week, we'll start notifying municipalities that they can, uh, look for supplying for the March first deadline. Um. Finally, the staff holiday party is Friday. Um, I emailed, uh, yesterday, if anyone is interested in joining, we're, we're more than welcome. It's one o'clock at the Whitman Tavern, but I would need to know, um.
I should be there. Maybe it'd be a little bit late.
Okay, great. It's a shame you won't be there, Bob, because I have the counterpoint to that, but I'll, I'll leave it at that. Um, okay, that's all.
Any other comments from board members? Okay, everybody have a good holiday and we'll see you in, uh, January. Thank you. Returning.
Thank you, everyone.